Okay, good evening, everyone. It is June 15th, shortly after 6:00 p.m., and I'll call our town council meeting to order. If we could, please take a moment for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our flag is to the right. Stand for that. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the re-upholding for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please take a moment of silence to acknowledge our military personnel, our firefighters, police officers, and all our civil servants who have dedicated their lives protecting our safety, freedom, and democracy? Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting this evening is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if anyone in the audience besides LCAT is recording, please identify yourself. I'm seeing none. Thank you, Don. In accordance with Mass General Law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded through a Zoom webinar pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. That should be addressed shortly, and I'm expecting changes, but we'll abide by that this evening. And if we move along here to public comments, anyone signed up, Jeanie?
No, no one sent a comment.
Thanks. Okay, under Council Comments. I have a comment on behalf of the entire town council. I'd like to present a proclamation here to Mr. Anderson for all his years of dedicated service. In fact, to elaborate, it's been approximately 25 years of service to the town of East Long Meadow as an elected official, serving on the planning board for 23 years, and as an elected member of our town council for the past five years. So we do have a plaque there. Take a look at the plaque. Sure, I'll take a quick few. Don, this is on behalf of everybody here. We appreciate everything you've done.
I love you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. That's very nice. Ryan, do you have a report for us tonight at all?
Mary, you can send hers along if you'd like. I can summarize it.
I think that would be great.
The town has been notified of the ARFA money, which is the recovery money. We don't have anything yet. Mary's been soliciting information, and Bruce has sent her some projects that would fall under that money. We had a department meeting on June 1st with the reopening, which was pretty uneventful. We set the doors to unlock at 8:00, and it was pretty much business as normal. One of the other things is with the governor, the state of emergency ending last night. It opens up for everything on the Fourth of July, which, as you guys know, is my big holiday event. So Carnival's on. We've been soliciting members to join. It's been going pretty well. We have the same net amount of bands. We lost one because the parade's on a Sunday. We gained another one. Fireworks are on. We just actually just signed the contract today for the fireworks on the 3rd. There was a... We were in danger of losing the 3rd and having to do it on the 2nd, but we were able to keep that date. And the carnival's going as well, with the only difference being no beer tent. Just with the tight timeframe, having to get in front of you guys for licensing and stuff. We just didn't do it, and we've got enough trying to pull everything else together. Other than that, Westcom is renovating the new building, the old Salted College building next to the Pike. The Coffee with a Cop event took place on Saturday, June 5th. It was very well attended. Let's see, town elections. I'm sure Jeanie can give a little more info on that. Other than that, I know Mary had appointed a bunch of board members, to the library trustees, to conservation, some reappointments for planning board, and as well as recreation and historical commission. And our veteran service officer is retiring, and they're soliciting applicants for that now. And I think one of the benefits for East Long Meadow is that person will not be based in East Long Meadow, which has always been, you know, we were paying the large amount of the fee, and they weren't based out of here. I didn't think it was fair, but now it's... Looks like that's been... Mary's fixed that. And the Audit Committee for the Hammond County Retirement Board. I know that's been in the news and on everyone's minds, and Steve is on the Audit Committee. That's sorry.
That's it?
That's it.
Thanks. We appreciate it.
Got it.
If we could have a motion to approve our open session minutes from May 25th, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the... I make a motion to approve the May 25th, 2021, open session minutes.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing and seeing none, please signify if you're in favor with an aye.
Aye.
Any nays for opposition? I don't see any. Okay. We... Same approval of open session minutes from our June 1st meeting.
I move to approve the June 1st, 2021, open session minutes. I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second again. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing and seeing none, could we signify with an aye? And any nays? Very good.
Abstain.
And one?
Abstention.
Abstention. Thank you. Okay. Under Communication, Correspondence, and Announcements, I believe Jeanie has a statement to make regarding our election that just took place?
Yep, the June 8th election was the one and only 2021 election. Until next year after last year was my pleasure. I know. I know, we're already talking about next year, and you say, oh, no. And there was 1,400 even total actual voters, 11.2% turnout. And 10% of that number was from either vote by mail or absentee ballots. So this was the first local election that allowed the vote by mail, and together with the absentee was about 10% that came in. So not as much as last year, but pretty good turnout. I guess people were used to doing it last year and thought it was convenient. So for the town council, Tom O'Connor regained his seat with 809 votes. And then Connor O'Shea will be joining the council with 715 votes. And Cassandra Trasolo, 577 votes. For school committee, Sarah Truul regained her seat with 721 votes, and Amy Lee Delenda had 648 votes. And the charter ballot questions passed, and I was pleased to see... I expected some blanks, that people wouldn't answer the questions, but I would say 80% to 85% people answered the questions. So I'm hoping the mailing that I did helped them with that. There were some questions at the elections, but I think the mailing probably decreased the amount of confusion on that, hopefully. Again, just want to thank everybody, the DPW, IT, the police, the school. So we had to use the cafeteria for the COVID restrictions to spread out the foot traffic and keep the six-feet social distance. Because school was in session, we had the gym, which normally is where the elections happen. But the break room for the election workers was displaced. So Tim Allen, the principal at Richland Park, was creative in getting us our space, and he was very good and helpful. And the custodians, I can't say enough about them, from setup to breakdown. And they even have ideas of how we could do something better. So I just want to thank everybody for all their participation, town manager, department heads. And we'll take a little breather then until next year. Good job. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is a public hearing scheduled for 6:15, and that is to address a proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the purpose of amending and clarifying Section 7.2. This is a continued public hearing for a required second reading, as I mentioned, for a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw, 72 Special Permits. Could you read the bylaw, Ralph, into the...
If you have it.
And I have a...
Actually, I got it. Is that it? No, I got it? Yes.
Yes.
So you want to start with the purpose?
I think we could... Right. Start with the purpose, and then the...
Sure.
The red, is it highlighted on yours? The red, because that's...
It's Section 1.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
So for the purpose of amending and clarifying Section 7.2 Special Permits, Subsection 7.30 Criteria, new item I, under the Town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw. I, all required state and local licenses must be acquired and kept current. Failure to meet this criterion is grounds for revocation of the special permit by the Special Permit Granting Authority. This is recommended by the Town of East Long Meadow's Planning Board, which held a vote and passed at 5-0.
Thank you. At this time, I'll introduce the council. We have Marilyn Richards to my right. Sitting next to Marilyn is Ralph Page, Pat Henry, myself, Kathy Hill, and Don Anderson. And Jeanie, could you read the legal notice into the record, please?
Sure. The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 25, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. via Zoom webinar for the purpose of amending and clarifying Section 7.2 Special Permits, Subsection 7.30 Criteria. Information relating to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public on the town's website. For the council, Jean Quagwady, Town Clerk, Clerk of the council.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else to add at this point in time? Because I believe the town is the applicant, and... Not seeing any. So at this time, we can open up the public hearing for a public comment. Don, maybe you can let us know if you see anyone in the audience.
Yeah, if you want to invite anybody to raise their hands, but I don't see anybody.
Okay. So anyone in the audience that's watching this meeting via Zoom that would like to participate, would you please raise your hand so that we can bring you into our meeting?
Oh, you're all set.
Okay.
Samantha Rodriguez?
Excuse me, she is the applicant for the...
Yeah, she's next.
The AMG Retail, DBA change and manager change.
Right.
Just to clarify, just for this hearing.
Okay. So we will bring her in if she requests to speak during the second portion of our second meeting scheduled for 6:30. So other than that, we have no more other public members interested in chiming in, correct?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, so at this time, we'll close the public input portion of our meeting, and I'll ask the council, if any council member has anything they'd like to add or comment about. Pat?
Just as a reminder, Mike and everyone, this came about because we did not have a requirement for... What do you call it?
Kennel licenses?
You know, dog...
Pet daycare.
Pet daycare. And so our town attorney suggested that we should add this to our bylaws to make sure that the daycares did remain licensed.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Okay. So I'll close the public hearing, and I'd like to do that with a roll call vote. Close the hearing, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Okay. I would ask for a motion under 8A, if there's no further discussion.
I motion to approve a zoning bylaw amendment for the purpose of amending and clarifying Section 7.2 Special Permits, Subsection 7.30 Criteria, adding new item I as presented.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and we have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, this will be a roll call vote as well. And we'll start the voting with Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I know, yes as well. Pat?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Well, just a little bit short, by, I'd say approximately eight minutes. 6:20. Nope, we're there. God, it said 6:30. I guess that's what these glasses are for.
We knew this wouldn't be long.
So our second public hearing this evening is a continued public hearing as well for a required second reading for the proposed amendment to the general bylaw, Section 4.040, Town Clerk. And Mr. Henry, would you like to read the bylaw?
Yes, the town of East Long Meadow proposes a general bylaw amendment adding number 33 to the list of town clerk fees in Section 4.040 Town Clerk. The new fees would be for a kennel license. One to four dogs, $30. Five to 10 dogs, $60. More than 10 dogs, $100.
Thank you, Pat. Again, our consulars on my left are Don Anderson, Kathy Hill, myself, Mike Kane, Pat Henry, Ralph Page, and Marilyn Richards. And Jeanie, could you read that notice into the record, please?
Sure. The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 25, 2021, at 6:40 p.m. via Zoom webinar for the purpose of amending general bylaws, Section 4.04 Town Clerk, to add fees for kennel licenses. Information relating to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public on the town's website. For the council, Jean Quagwady, Town Clerk, Clerk of the council.
Thank you, Jeanie. Okay. So if somebody wants to make a brief statement on the reasons and rationale for the proposed amendment, Ralph, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure. I think it's important that we add the cost of the different fees and put them into the bylaws, which, when we finish our e-codification, we will have a whole list. But before then, we do charge for kennel licenses, and so I think it's transparent to put it out in a bylaw and let everyone know what it is.
Perfect. Thanks. Any other comments? Okay, so at this point in time, we can open up the public hearing for public input now. I will ask if anyone is in the audience that would like to participate via Zoom. Could you please raise your hand so that we can bring you in? And are we showing anyone, Don?
Samantha Rodriguez still has her hand up. So I'm not sure if this was the second one that she was part of.
Okay. If she does want to come in, I would just ask that anybody that does come in, please state their name and address for the record here.
Jeanie's the next one.
She's representing the AMG Retail for Licensing Matters.
Okay. So still one more.
Still one more.
So there is no other hands at this point in time, I'm assuming?
Nope.
Okay, so again, we can close the public portion of the meeting, and I'll ask if there's any council comments to be added. Okay. I don't see any council comments, so we're ready to close this public hearing. And that will require a roll call vote, please. Don Anderson?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Pat?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll ask for a motion regarding our second public hearing.
Mike, I make a motion to approve a general bylaw amendment adding kennel license fees to the list of town clerk fees in Section 4.040 as presented.
Thank you. And we have a second.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Pat. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. This requires a roll call vote as well. Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Pat?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you all. All right, moving right along here under Borders of the Day, under Licensing Matters. First order of business is a change of DBA. AMG Retail, 1 DBA, Atlantis Fish Market. This is basically for housekeeping purposes. Kathy, did you have anything on the licensing side of this?
For a change of doing business? No.
Yeah, okay. Jeanie?
Sure, I can offer something. So when they applied first for their liquor license, Shell was on the application as the DBA, and I believe at the time, they might not have signage up yet. So it just stayed that way, and I caught it again on the redo. So this is just a housekeeping issue to change the DBA name for the license purposes. Nothing else has changed, except for the manager, but we'll get to that.
Okay. Before we... Go ahead.
I believe Samantha Rodriguez, I don't know if she wants to come in and add anything else, because she's the one that's been sitting in the audience with her hand up. But she's the applicant that's representing AMG, so...
Okay. Don, do you... Well, I'll invite her in by raising her hand, please, so we can bring you into our meeting.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. How are you?
Good, thanks. Good.
Slow. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, it's Samantha Rodriguez. I'm with Atlantis Management Group. The address is the Shaker Road Shell.
Thank you. Would you like...
So I don't really have anything unless there's anything you guys need to do, or I need to do on my part. Your staff has been extremely helpful as far as directing me as, you know, as where I need to go and what I need to do. So unless you guys have anything for me, I am just all yours tonight.
All right. Then what I will do at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion, which will open up discussion. And if you can stand by one moment in case there are any questions, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I move to approve a change of DBA for AMG Retail 1 from Shell to Atlantis Fresh Market.
Second? See, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Marilyn?
So my understanding is that nothing's going to change. It's just the name. The way the business is currently operating, it will continue as is.
That's my understanding. And this is like Jeanie stated earlier, more of a housekeeping issue. Issue, so...
I was hoping maybe we'd see fresh vegetables and...
I would love to see that, guys. We're working on it.
Thanks for listening.
No problem. We take any form of... Any comments or anything you guys want to see, you have... Somebody email me. I'll make it happen.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, then please signify by an aye if you are in favor. Don?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, and there's no opposition. Moving right along here to the second piece of this. I'll entertain a motion regarding... It's for the change of manager, I believe. Ralph, would you like to read that motion?
Sure.
It's under B1, I believe?
Yep. A2, right. Motion to approve change of manager for AMG Retail 1 DBA Atlantis Fresh Market to Crystal Johnson.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there aren't any nays, so it's unanimous. Thank you for your time and being available for questions, and best of luck moving forward. I believe she's gone. Very good.
You can't tell if you don't see their faces.
You don't see them disappear.
Okay. Yeah, all right. So we did the DBA, the chain and manager. So under Licensing Matters, this is an extension of a deadline to utilize an existing liquor license from Redstone Pasta. And not to put you on the spot, Kathy, do you have any other information?
I do have a little bit of background on this. As you know, Redstone Pasta has taken over the former Pasquale's Restaurant, and Mr. Accor... Is it Accoris?
Accoris.
Has done a wonderful job over the last probably two years, transforming it into the type of establishment that meets his vision for producing homemade pasta on site. He is on the cusp of being able to open with the one obstacle, which, if you follow the news, many, particularly restaurateurs, are experiencing a lack of interest in taking positions in the food industry. So Mr. Accoris's attorney approached Jeanie through a letter, or email.
Email.
Wondering if, because he was not able to open, and he's under a license that is issued annually, and we do our licenses January to January, would there be some consideration given to the owner at Redstone? Because he is earnestly trying to hire enough staff. And what he does not want to do is hire what he can get and try to open and not provide what, in his eyes, is the level of service and quality of food that he's accustomed to providing his clientele. He owns another establishment in East Windsor, Connecticut, which gets wonderful reviews. And he is respectfully asking if we can give some consideration on his getting some extra time to secure the amount of help he needs in the front of the house, the servers, and in the back of the house, the chefs and the cooks and whatnot, so that he can open his business as he envisioned. That's a pretty good one, I would think. Yep?
Well, Attorney Joel Castleman, representing Mr. Accoris, I think would like to say a few words whenever you think it's appropriate.
We'll figure out if that's necessary at this point. What I'd like to do, if we're going to continue discussion on it, is there's no motion printed out or assigned, but could I have a motion to approve with a specific date in mind on the extension?
It's hard to look into a crystal ball with the situation of many employers struggling to attract help, but I would think 120 days? Is that too much?
I think for committing this, how about if we went out to the end of the year? So thoughts?
Well, I have a question. How long has this license been open, number one? And two, has he paid the fee for this year?
Yes.
That would help us in our discussions, I believe.
He has faithfully paid every year. This would be his third year holding a license. And as you know, in our subcommittee, we brought that up. We brought that matter up, that there were a very small number of establishments that were holding a particular license and were not wholly using it. And we said we would address it on a case-by-case basis. So in fact, Mr. Accoris is doing his due diligence by saying, look, I really want... I'm ready to go, but I need... I have to have the proper amount of employees to do what I want to do. So I'd like some consideration there.
Part of the reason... I'm sorry. Part of the reason I threw out the date of running to the end of the year is I think we know how all businesses are struggling right now with labor issues. And until the unemployment situation is rectified, which is going to take us out at least into September, I felt that it might be appropriate, because the relicensing and the fees that will be due in the future will be coming up at the end of the year, and those fees are already paid through the end of the year. So that's why I put out a date of... An emotion, if we could add a 12:31 date, unless any of you have another date in mind.
I was thinking six months, which is the end of the year, basically.
Okay.
And, you know, there's been such a... And, you know, there's been such a significant financial, you know, in terms of their restaurant renovation, they've put in so much money into this location that, given the circumstances, I think that we need to try to work with them. And six months, I think, would be at least a decent amount of time.
Ralph?
So Mike, my question is, back in January when we renewed this, didn't we say at that time that we're expecting you to be up and operating in six months? And is that why now we have to look at it again for the next six months?
That is.
I do understand. I know what it's like trying to find help, and it's very difficult. And I would have no opposition to going through the end of the year.
Okay. So, Pat, do you have any other comments?
I was on the licensing subcommittee, and we did extend everyone until the end of 2020, saying that after the end of 2020, we would start to look at each one individually. And I heard tonight a statement that he's ready to go, except for this problem of hiring people. And I would look towards a shorter timeframe, more like 90 days, with the recognition that it always could extend it. But once we extend it to the end of the year or to six months, we've lost our ability in case absolutely nothing were to happen. And I don't expect that's what's going to happen. I expect he's going to be working diligently. But if he's that ready, it would seem to me he should be able to find somebody in 60 to 90 days. I would be in favor of 90 days.
I'd just like to add that the local area restaurants are all having hiring events because they don't have enough people themselves. And they hired my grandson. So they're, you know, they're... But he's doing a good job. But the point is that there are, everyone's in this predicament. It's not just Redstone, but it's harder for them because they haven't, you know, they haven't started. And so I really would like to give them the benefit of the doubt going forward because I want them to succeed. And, you know.
I feel the same way, and I think that that September date relaxing the unemployment is beneficial. But did you have, Don, you have any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I had time support at the end of the month, I mean, the end of the year as well. Just to give you a case in point of hiring, a friend of mine went to a national chain restaurant, sit-down chain restaurant on the Cape. And there was one server for the entire restaurant. And this is a good-sized national chain that would never survive with one server for the entire restaurant. So this is a big issue. However, this is the first week of unemployment where they are now requiring people to apply three different times, or three different places every week to maintain. So if there was any type of logjam of people collecting unemployment vis-à-vis going out for work, I think we're going to start seeing that change coming up. So putting that all together, I think, end of the year is going to be fine. I mean, there's just too much money being left on the table with that liquor license not being cashing in that I think the economics will lead to this place opening a lot sooner than the end of the year. But given that comfort level, I think is, would be very supportive.
Right, certainly not boxing himself in. If he can find the help sooner than later, otherwise we'll be revisiting the issue with whatever the timeframe. And I think that the timeframe wise suggests that coincides with license renewals and everything that's working around our licensing board. So could I have a motion to extend with a date, and then we'll take the pleasure of the council? There is no...
I move to extend the deadline for Redstone Pasta to utilize their existing liquor license until December 31, 2021.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Just a question, Mike. When do the renewals for liquor licenses go out? Is it the beginning of December? Because they have to be back.
They go out... Jeanne knows.
So I receive all the notifications from the state in mid-October, and they're supposed to be signed and back to me by November 30th. So they're in place for you for your December meeting for approvals.
So if he is going to be looking to renew a liquor license, shouldn't we make sure that the dates coincide that this runs through the end of the year? I mean, he's going to be coming back in front of us in December at our December meeting to ask for a renewal on it.
We got a status. I mean, he's paid through the year.
He's paid till December 31st.
Yes, okay.
So we'll, you know, by October, we should have a feeling he's going to be, you know, reapplying for that license for 2022. And maybe we can get a status on where, you know, how he's making out as far as staffing the place. But, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion on that particular motion? Pat?
I would point out that all of the arguments that are made in favor of the year-end equally apply to a 90 days. That is to say, it gives him breathing time. It gives him an opportunity to come back at the end of 90 days. And I feel that our efforts have been to try to reduce the number of these licenses as a town. We've been trying to reduce the number of these licenses that haven't been used. And so to me, the end of the year is not realistic.
Marilyn?
Before we vote, is there a gentleman that is in the audience that wants to speak on this? I don't know. Jeanne, you had mentioned that there might be...
Attorney Joel Castleman.
Do we want to hear from him before we vote? Is that something that...
I don't, I can only speak for myself that what he has to say is not going to change my position on it.
So Mike, if we went 90 days, we would still have the option to extend it an additional 90 if we so chose.
Yeah, we're not boxing ourselves in. It just has been required, you know, bring it back on the agenda and adjust the issue. So if the pleasure of the council seems to want to work toward a 90-day period, I'm taking kind of like a straw poll vote here.
Well, the motion is in December 31st. We need to either withdraw it or we need to have an amended motion.
Exactly.
Would you withdraw? Would Kathy withdraw?
No. I think in the interest of trying to help this gentleman, he's been a good faith, prospective business owner in the town and has paid his fees every single year and has encountered a number of obstacles in trying to bring the building up to code. He's worked with our building inspector. If he is in a position by the middle of September to open his doors, I have to believe he will do that because it behooves him to begin to be successful here. I don't think he's going to wait till December 31st.
See, I feel the same way because I've gone down and viewed the property, and he's made a substantial investment. This is not somebody that's trying to take a license and just haul that license. It's in his best interest to get that establishment open ASAP. He is running a second restaurant. And I've had X amount of dialogue with him, and Kathy, you have as well. So that's why my level of comfort is to, you know, give him that latitude to find those employees to get open. So, but we do have a... Yeah, I was going to say, we have a motion on the floor with a specific timeframe. So all those in favor signify with an aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And nay?
Nay.
Okay. So we're moving to financial matters now, and it's the approval of the school bus sale proceeds to transfer. And fortunately, we have Steve here with questions. But we could start with a motion and then get into some dialogue.
I'll make a motion that the amount of $340,200 received by the town upon the sale of school buses is hereby transferred from fund balance reserve for debt service to the debt service budget in order to redeem a portion of the outstanding bond issue from which funds to purchase the buses were derived and to pay all associated costs associated therewith, which will in turn provide interest expense savings for the town.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ralph?
Can you explain that? So I'm assuming, I'm assuming we sold the buses, the money goes into an account. And what you're looking at doing is either purchasing some of the bond or paying it down so that we don't have the expenses of it.
Right. What happens, the buses were sold before the bond was paid off. So when we received the money, it went into the fund balance reserve for debt. And so now these bonds happen to have a callable feature, coincidentally, up in August. And so this is taking that proceeds to pay that off, which will save on interest costs and principal cost to...
I have a question, if I can.
Sure.
Steve, how many buses are we talking about here?
To be honest, I think there was five. I'm not sure.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please signify with an aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So I don't believe we have any opposition. No opposition.
It's always nice to ask. You never know when I'm going to oppose something.
There you go. Yeah, see, I did that for Ralph.
So under financial items or matters, number two is to rescind free cash transfer of the $17,696 approved for the fire department on February 9th of 2021. So before we start into discussion, could I have a motion on B2, please?
Yes. I move to rescind the February 9, 2021 vote to approve the funding of $17,696 from the FY '20 free cash to replace damaged firefighter's gear. $17,696 being the portion of the claim not covered by the insurance company.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second. Discussion. Around the room? Ralph?
You just have to look to me. There's always some financial stuff. So why don't we need the money? Was it that the insurance paid 100% of it, or...
If you remember, the chief said he was going to go to the company and see if you could get the balance, and the company paid the balance, so we paid 100%.
That's great. That's good to hear.
Right.
Should have asked you first.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'm going to do it this way. Those opposed, please signify with a nay. Those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Under three, this is to approve a transfer of $210,338 from the water free cash to vehicle replacement reserve. Motion, please.
I motion to approve the transfer of $210,338 from water free cash to the vehicle replacement reserve.
I will second.
Okay, motion and second. Discussion. Ralph?
We could ask Steve first.
Well, this way... It's only fair to let Steve, he brought himself here.
Well, I'm opening up the discussion with a motion that's on the floor and seconded. So, go ahead.
In FY '16, each budget from '16 through '21 has approved, on average, there's breakdown there, 35, then 36, 38, and then 50 and $50,000 to be put in the water enterprise vehicle replacement fund. Each year, though, that that transfer or the entry was never made. So it stayed with the free cash and the designated fund balance and just rolled into that each year. This is to correct that so that when we go to replace vehicles, we actually have the reserve to take the money from.
Ralph?
Sorry, I beat you to it. But from 2016 to '21, have we not purchased vehicles out of these departments? I mean, I know, I believe there was a pickup truck purchased. And shouldn't that be, instead of replacing all the money, shouldn't that money come out of what we had set aside for the vehicles?
The money that we used, that you talked about, was in this year, was in '21, which we made the entry into the reserve fund. That's how we discovered that the other one actually hadn't been made. And so these are the ones to catch it up. This is a net number.
So we've gone back and looked at all the other years. There was no vehicles in those years?
That's what I saw. I will double-check for you, but I have no knowledge of it.
And so going forwards, we've elected to bond half of a jet truck or something like that under capital projects, which was over $200,000. Are we now going to be using these funds instead of sending it out to bond?
We certainly can. That would be a discussion, but you could use it for that replacement. But if it, we believe, I believe with the capital project, it was approved to be bonded. So we...
I think it was approved to be bonded in case we didn't have any money in that account that showed as no money being...
We'd have to undo it and redo it again, but we could do it.
Through the chair, is there a target for that fund? Or how big can it build before we fold it back into the general fund?
It's, well, it's from the enterprise fund, so it's staying with the enterprise. And we, there's no target number that it's going to hit at $500,000, we're going to stop.
How big can it get?
As long as you, as long as it's appropriated each year in the budget by however much goes in there. I have a feeling that we're going to have to replace trucks at some point in time. So along the way, it'll deplete it and then add back in each budget period. But if you look on the, in the budget, the enterprise articles, you'll see there's a vehicle replacement line item. That's where we appropriate into it. If it got too large for the council's liking, I guess you could not approve that part of the budget.
Okay. Any other... Ralph?
I'm just concerned, I have a feeling at some point that, you know, we looked at vehicles based on the water department and the sewer department. I mean, from 2016 to '21, I would assume somewhere in there they wanted a vehicle. And money's been taken out of that. And to turn the whole thing back right at the moment without double-checking first...
Well, these, the money going in here is in, it's a reserve, it's in a fund balance reserve. So if we came back and said, oh, we bought $100,000 of a truck in '17, you could take that out at that point and transfer it over. We could transfer over at that point. This is just putting it into the vehicle reserve.
And then if we did use the money, then...
We could take it out and get it out. We could move it out.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions for Steve?
So the only thing is, a follow-up. I'd just like you to double-check.
Absolutely.
I just, something tells me that we have spent money on vehicles.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it just wasn't charged to...
Right.
This account would have been charged to the enterprise general fund. This cleans up the accounting on the back end and still doesn't authorize any additional spending over what was already authorized. Just cleanup work.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is I don't want to take all this money because you look at it, $35,000, $50,000, $50,000. And obviously, when we bought a vehicle, we expected to use the money out of that. So again, it'll have to be, come back and...
With the capital project, the ones that were on target to take out the vehicle reserve was stated in the capital, when it was voted, X percentage to be taken out of the vehicle reserve. So the other ones that weren't, that didn't have, they missed the language, may not have been there to say that take it out of the vehicle reserve fund, which case then as is, is kind of where it'd go. It may be because there wasn't the awareness of it. I'm not saying that. But that's just, you know, for clarification, I guess.
A follow-up on at least the number of vehicles and when it was, that would be great. Thank you.
Pat? And I do agree with counsel page that we probably would have not bonded the jet truck if we had known the amount of money was there. So I'm hoping that it doesn't continue to accumulate. I'm not willing to say, let's go back and reopen that. It's fine. But we wouldn't have done that, I don't think. And I think this is the kind of thing that hopefully you have cleaned up, Steve. And it's going, it's not going to grow like topsy.
No, no. You know, we'll come, let the council know as far as the budget process anyways, what's in the balance in that fund.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? And the ayes have it. Okay, so the next item is approval of the transfer. This is the same dollar amount, not to be confused.
Sue, you want a motion, Mike?
For the sewer? Yeah, if we could have a motion for item four under financial.
My motion to approve the transfer of $210,338 from sewer free cash to the vehicle replacement reserve.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. And before we open up for discussion, Steve, do you want to brief us on that?
I would say last discussion, take off water and put in sewer. They, each budget, the same amount was allocated to, it's just the sewer side of it. And so it's exactly the same.
And my response would be exactly the same.
My response would be exactly the same.
All right, thanks. If there's no further discussion, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And the ayes have it again.
Vote with exactly the same.
All right, Patrick, could I have a motion for B5, please?
I move to approve the transfer of $26,000 on the ambulance reserve, ambulance revenue fund to cover a shortfall.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Discussion on this transfer? So, go ahead. Unless, Steve, do you have anything you want to add or?
I'll try. The, because the ambulance ones, the ambulance has been doing rather well. And the revenue, it's kind of a double, sorry to say that, but the revenue was projected at 600,000 for FY '21 and currently we're at 1.2 million. And the costs associated with that were higher than expected and it was just underestimated. So we need 26,000 to balance that out.
I believe Chief Moore sits in the audience.
Chief is, yeah. The chief is here.
We believe him.
Chief also did send us a message, so we got his response as to what it is.
Okay, any further discussion on that transfer?
Like I said, Mike, I think part of it is, being on Zoom, it's nice just to let people know that basically this is for the billing aspect of it, which cost us more to do all this billing. And that's why there's a shortfall. It's not, not anything other than that, so.
Thanks. Yeah, it does help for people listening in that don't, that aren't, have a dialogue with us on a day-to-day basis, right? So motion second, all in favor signify with an aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it again. Okay, number six, this is about a donation. Could I have a motion regarding B6, please?
Sure, Mike. I motion to approve the donation of an engraved bench in honor of an East Long Meadow residence 100th birthday per Massachusetts General Chapter 44, Section 53, eight and a half.
How second that?
Okay, before we start discussion, we're not mentioning names. This is a surprise. So I appreciate if nobody asked that particular question. Other than that, discussion.
I think it's wonderful.
It's a nice trip.
It is.
Nice, very nice.
Great. So we'll vote on this with, to approve the donation, please signify with an aye. Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you all. That completes our financial matters. There are no issues under old business this evening, but under new business, we can discuss our town council summer meeting dates. I can let everyone know that the first meeting, well, the second Tuesday per our charter falls on the 13th of July. And the second Tuesday of August would fall on August 10th. And open up for any discussion we might want to have pertaining to our meetings for the summer schedule. Kath?
I'll start if I can. I am not available on the 13th of July. And at the same time, I'm very cognizant of the fact that we in July must go through the reorganization process. And our charter states that we all, we must all be present. So if the requirement is to be in person to conduct the reorg and I'm not able to vote by, through Zoom, then, and I can't do anything about restructuring that date. So unfortunately, I'm just putting that out to you. I will be absent on, on that June, July 13th if, if that's the date chosen. But then that prohibits a full council being able to reorganize.
And we're kind of left hanging a little bit because the governor could, after legislation acts on it, move this back where we might have to meet via Zoom again. And that would correct the problem, right? But we're kind of in a standby mode and that's why this subject matter is open for discussion at this point. Does anyone else have any problems with the 13th? I don't see how we would get around that. I would think our only option, because we're mandated by the charter to meet on the second Tuesday of the month. We just deviated around that per the election, but obviously we needed to have our June 8th election. So I think that the worst thing that could happen is our reorganization. Maybe we might have to have a second meeting in July. And that would be our safety net. So why don't we see how this plays out with the governor and how we're going to be meeting in the future and then we'll address the date in July. And that'll help us decide whether there's one meeting or two meetings necessary. And while we're on that subject, how about, does anybody have any idea what they're doing on August 10th?
I was planning to come to a council meeting.
All right, well, that's a good sign. So any other discussion on our meeting dates for the summer?
Would we want to tentatively schedule a week after July 13th? For the second meeting for the, just for the reorganization?
Pardon?
Or the last one, the last Tuesday.
27?
I hate that. I just hate to delay it that much.
The only trouble is we can, we may conflict with planning board like we did tonight.
Okay, so we can, if you have the motions in front of you, we can write in some temporary dates here. Do we want to start with the 13th and hopefully it could be done via Zoom, which could include you? And then we'll address it down the road if we have to add that second meeting in the following Tuesday? So Pat, you want to read the motion with those dates in mind?
We can always talk after. I move to approve the 2021 summer town council meeting dates to be July 13th, 2021, and August 10th, 2021.
I second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. I don't believe there's any further discussion. And if you're in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Or opposed with a nay. Okay, so continuing along under new business, under D2. Pat, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mike. Before we leave that, could we ask, will Jeannie be providing a list of the dates for next year as the town clerk usually does?
I know that Jackie already looked at that. Is it posted on the website yet, Jackie? We can send those to you.
So are these dates, they are already these dates that we've just approved? Is there?
They're regular Tuesdays.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mike.
You're very welcome. Continuing along under new business, a discussion over the Juneteenth holiday. As you all know, I'll just start off by starting with it, this was a holiday that came about in the state of Texas. And it worked its way up to Massachusetts and it is a holiday in Massachusetts as it stands. We can have a holiday and in terms of compensation, there's lots of, of moving targets and, you know, amounts and how they affect numerous departments through the town. So that's why we added this to the agenda to be able to speak on it and decide what we want to do with this. So we'll, I'll open it up for discussion before we start with a motion on this subject matter. Pat?
I'm really puzzled. I was puzzled when this became a holiday in the state because historically, this happened only in Texas. And this was the date when Texas freed its slaves, whereas all the slaves in the country were freed two years before by Lincoln. So historically, this has no connection with Massachusetts whatsoever. It's my understanding that only three other states have made it into a holiday and it's not a federal holiday because we have Martin Luther King Day, which is really the purpose to celebrate and recognize the needs and aspirations of the black community. This community also, or this, this holiday would not recognize other subgroups such as Native Americans, LGBTQ, Latinos, Asians. It's very specifically oriented toward Texas. That's happened 150 years ago. So I think we should probably seek more information. And I would suggest we might want to postpone this discussion and carry it to another meeting.
Okay.
Mike, may I?
Sure.
I've been trying to figure out, we're the legislative branch, so we appropriate X amount of funds for departments for their payroll and stuff. But I can't ever remember at a town meeting or anything voting on holidays. It's a contractual obligation that the executive branch town manager should be deciding. I don't think this falls on us. I think it falls on us whether or not we want to increase, you know, the compensation, the payroll and stuff, but not, to me, this shouldn't all be worked out within contracts and stuff. And I know there's multiple different departments and all with contracts. So my personal feeling is we shouldn't be involved in deciding which holiday someone gets paid on that. That's an executive branch decision that should be made.
It is. I would agree until, until we know exactly what the funding is, you know, what is the contribution? And then, then, then we can get engaged. But the reason it's on the agenda again for discussion purposes and transparency is that we are on top of it. We're looking at it. And there's many different levels of investigation to do. It affects many different departments differently, such as police and fire. Well, they, they're not going to have a day off. So if it's a holiday and they work on that day, it's going to have a financial ramification. And we, we all know that, you know, shoot from the hip a little bit, I think we have close to 1,000 or I want to say 100,000 employees in this town. Is that correct?
No, 1,000.
1,000.
I'm mixing my numbers up.
16,000 residents.
Right. Too many numbers. But with, with close to 1,000 employees in the town, it's, you know, it affects everybody differently. And, you know, we need to look at it and Mary certainly needs to be involved in discussion purposes. Exactly what you're mentioning, Ralph. And then it would be come back to, you know, if there's funding and it's going to have to be budgeted for. And I can say right now, I mean, we just came out of our budget season. If, if there were financial ramifications, we weren't budgeted in '21. We're not budgeted in '22 right now. And we'd have to look at turnbacks. So there's many, many different moving parts to this before jumping into anything. So Pat, would you like to make a motion regarding this subject matter?
Yes, I move we table further discussion of Juneteenth holiday to our January, our July 13th meeting.
Pardon? Oh. It would, because we talked about our, our scheduling here, could we pick a date where we'd have a full council here in case Kathy couldn't attend the June 13th meeting? Would you want to amend that?
August 10th. August 10th.
I would be more in favor of that, but I don't think in the next 30 days, Mary's going to have enough time to sit with all the bargaining units and work that out.
So the motion's to table till August 10th, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
I'll third it.
Seconded by Marilyn. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
And opposed with a nay. So the ayes have it. Okay, under summary, action items for our next meeting. I can revert back to Ralph, ask Steve for some clarification going forward. We'll, we'll see what happens with the governor on how our meetings are conducted in the future. That's all I have. I don't know if anyone else has anything they'd like to add? No?
Just a reminder that the fire department has their open house Saturday.
Saturday?
Saturday noon, yep.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion for last time, but never say never, that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please signify with an aye.
Aye.
And opposed. So we are adjourned this evening at 7:13. Thank you all. Thank you.